Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. I will call the meeting to order, and at this point, I'd also like to acknowledge that our town planner is joining us here tonight, together with our usual expert, our assistant town planner. So, thank you very much. If I haven't already called the meeting to order, I will call the meeting to order. The meeting is being broadcast live on W A C A TV, and I would ask at this point if anyone in the room is recording the meeting, and if so, to please indicate, and whether the meeting is being recorded via audio or video means.
And, if you would, and if I could.
Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for an accessory dwelling unit, special permit for two forty-four Prospect Street. The hearing was opened on November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, and was continued until today. I guess for purposes of the record, I'll read the notice. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven P. M. in the Board of Selectman Meeting Room, second floor, Ashland Town Hall, one oh one Main Street, Ashland, Massachusetts, to hear the petition of Kristen Grimes of Ashland, Massachusetts, requesting an accessory family dwelling unit special permit per Chapter forty A, Section six of the Massachusetts Zoning Act, and Chapter two eighty-two, Section seven point six, accessory family dwelling unit, and nine point three, special permits of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of an addition to be used as an accessory family dwelling unit. The property in question is located at two forty-four Prospect Street, assesses map twenty-nine, lot zero seven eight, in the residential A zoning district. Parties wishing to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. Case S P one dash twenty materials may be viewed at Town Hall during normal business hours, or at, and then there's a lengthy list of website addresses. For more information or to submit comments, please come, contact Emma Snellings at five oh eight five three two zero one zero zero, extension seven nine three zero, or at e Signed, John Trefath, and Chairman, Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. As I indicated, the hearing was opened at our last meeting on November twelfth. We heard a presentation by the applicant. We also opened the meeting for public comment, and received public comment from two individuals. There were questions asked by members of the board, and at the conclusion of the meeting, it was determined that it would be continued to tonight, and certain additional documentation was being requested to be provided by the applicant. At this point in time, for purposes of the record, the additional documentation that has been submitted, and which will be going into the record for this hearing, is a, an amended or updated application for the Zoning Board of Appeals, a residential property record card, the application for building permit denial, the denial dated nine thirty two thousand and nineteen. Also submitted into the record for tonight's hearing is a floodplain maps online dated twelve ten two thousand and nineteen, for the area of Framingham, which contains the address of two forty-four Prospect Street. And, in addition, we have a six-page document entitled renovation for Grimes slash Kenny, two forty-four Prospect Street, Ashland, Massachusetts, dated, stamped by the engineer, December sixth, two thousand and nineteen. And those will be entered into the record for purposes of this hearing. I don't think we need to enter these into the record, do we? I mean, I don't, I mean, they're historical, but they don't seem to me to add anything to the, to the application that we have before us. Okay, why don't we ask the applicant, if you would, just to, to step forward? I see Mr. Grimes here, on behalf of Kristen Grimes, I'm assuming?
Yes, correct.
Is there anything, well, let me just back up one moment. I thought where we had had the applicant make a presentation at the last meeting, and we received public comment, and we had questions from the board, I thought tonight, perhaps the best way to proceed, and I'll abide by what you folks think is best, is that we'd start out with the applicant having an opportunity to say anything additional in behalf of the application. The board would have an opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant, that, for anything new, or what have you, and then we would open the meeting for public comment, to receive any public comment that there may be, and then we would proceed from there. Is that satisfactory to everybody?
Yes, sounds good.
Okay. Then, Mr. Grimes, anything further that you wish to say?
The only thing I'd wish to add is that we have filed all the paperwork. It seems like you have everything in front of you. I personally, my wife personally, don't have any other, anything else to add to the matter at this point in time. So, if you have any questions for myself, please feel free to, please feel free to ask.
I just, I just want to clarify, again, for purposes of the record, we have this colored floodplain map, and I think each, does each of us have one of these, I believe? And, just to clarify, your, your property, which is at two forty-four Prospect Street, as I understand it, it's on the, it's on the Holliston border?
Yes, it is.
And it's noted on the floodplain map as the property that is highlighted with the four yellow lines? Is that your understanding?
Can I look at the map, please?
Sure. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, that would be it.
Okay. And again, and perhaps this is a question better addressed to Peter and Emma, but on the floodplain map, this is the first floodplain map I've looked at here on the Z B A, I just want to make sure, for the record, that we all understand what the markings are. There are, there's an area to the left and above the two forty-four Prospect Street property, on the other side of Raymond Way, that appears to be an irregularly shaped shape, in red, with red dots in it, highlighted, and in its portion of it, there's a light blue irregularly shaped object. Can you just explain to me what, what that represents?
Yep. The blue area is the flood zone. The pink area is areas of minimal flood hazard.
And, the two forty-four Prospect Street is not in either of those, is from the map, correct? Okay, thank you. Any further questions on that issue, from anybody? Any, any further questions for Mr. Grimes on the, on the application?
Just a quick one. We had touched on the spur footage last time, and had said that it looked like it was going to be less than eight hundred square feet.
Correct.
We've got slightly updated plans here, looks like twenty-three by thirty-six and a half, twenty-three feet by thirty-six and a half feet. Is that right for the addition size?
Yes.
All right, so math is not my strong suit, but my back of the napkin math gets that a little bit over eight hundred square feet. Is there something I'm missing there, or is my math off?
There is, there is a piece that's going to be added, where it's our, that's not the in-law piece, that is, the in-law piece is going to be less than eight hundred.
On?
There is a little piece that we're adding ourselves onto, which will come off the back, as you can see.
Is that, that extra piece that's being added to your home?
Yes.
Is that shown on these plans?
Yes, it is.
Could you point that out to us, please?
I sure can. Do you want me to come up there?
If you can show us from, just perhaps what page, what numbered page you're looking at, and see if we can do it from there.
Sorry, I'm in the wrong file.
If not, one of us will move. Perhaps I come closer to you, whatever.
this area.
Which page are we on, sir?
I'm sorry, one, one, two, three, four.
Yours may not be?
Page four.
Page four. Is that the one?
Lettered A two?
Yes.
A two, okay.
Off the back of the three-season porch, the far end, is a living area.
All right, but the thirty-six and a half runs from the edge of the, the back edge of the three-season porch, to the end of the addition, that's what I'm looking at. All right, I see there's, the full length of the addition, it looks like is forty-eight feet, ten inches, and then the, the portion that's, you know, looks like all-new construction is thirty-six and a half feet by twenty-three.
I guess that wasn't, I'd have to take a look, back a look at the plans with that.
I just wanted to make sure.
That was not.
So, just to clarify, just a little bit, looking at, you know, I'm looking at this as well. I understand it says, when you look at this, it goes from the outside wall, you have to look at the interior wall, which is livable space. So, really, it's twenty-two by thirty-six?
Okay.
And when I do that math, it ends up to be seven ninety-four.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
There's no problem. We looked at it, and then also, the stairway down is not considered livable space either. So, in my assumption, in looking at this plan, since they, they submitted, it is under the eight hundred, as required in the bylaws.
All right.
So, Peter, just to reiterate, it was seventy-two by thirty-six, did you say?
I'm sorry, twenty-two by thirty-six.
Twenty-two by thirty-six.
Correct. If you look at these dimensions, it goes from the outside wall to the outside wall. That's not, the wall is, give or take a foot, right? If you take the, if you, the, the wall is not livable space, unless you're a mouse. So, that said, you do need to kind of take into account that livable space, as is submitted in the bylaw, and then reconfigure the math. And so, when I, doing the back of the math, twenty-two by thirty-six ends up being seven ninety-four, so they become under that eight hundred requirement.
That's all I've got.
Okay, good. Any, any further comments? Okay. No, I have none. Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll open the meeting up for public comment. Ms. Mims?
For the record, my name is Pam Mims, and, you know, I'm going to read a statement here, and then, and then go from there. I want to thank you for taking the time, and allowing me the time to review the documents. I had an opportunity to come down here and meet with Ms. Snellings and Mr. Mathcheck, which was nice, but we still have open issues that, in my opinion, still exist. So, but, you know, I'll move past those open issues, but I will just reiterate the, the issues. The first, the denial letter, as I discussed, it says a denial letter. It's not a deny, according to Ms. Snellings, it's not a letter, it's just a statement. So, in the application, it states a denial letter, so, but that's all right. I'm, I'm not going to focus on that right now, because there's more of an issue here that I, I am concerned with. The butters list, don't know if it's been updated. Last I saw, I was here last week, it hadn't been updated, so we'll leave that alone. Concerns were raised in the last meeting in terms of the topography, in terms of the wetlands, in terms of the garage that was on the property. So, you know, I, I'm not going to go over there and look to see where the alignment is on the garage, whose property the garage lies on. That is something that the applicant should provide, but getting past that, what I do want to focus on, though, is in terms of this nonconformity, as this is, you know, a nonconformity, hence the triggering of the special permit in this meeting. So, in, in terms of a nonconformity, you know, according to the criteria of the town, actually, according to the criteria of the state, the nonconformity, it's, it's due, the criteria for a variance is that you need to create or extend a nonconformity due to hardship derived from the physical conditions of the lot, or else the lot can't be used. So, in other words, what they're saying is that nonconformity to approve something of this nature is, is very substantial, it's a substantial threshold to approve it. So, you know, there should be discussions in terms of, and this is based on the application, if you read the application, it's all there. So, please, I get looks of confusion, read the application, it's, you know, it's pulling it right off the application, so, and these are the Mass General laws, okay? So, it talks about the community needs served by the proposal, the traffic flow, it goes on and on, and there's many other requirements. I don't recall any of that was discussed. You know, in terms of, you know, is this beneficial for the neighborhood? Is it beneficial for the town? I would suggest that it's probably not beneficial for any, going to trigger a nonconformity, it's not going to fit in the neighborhood, and that is an issue. So, that's a concern. So, as I said at the previous meeting, I don't agree with this. I, you know, went through your notes, and I didn't see anywhere in your notes, in terms of approving this type of project. I saw approval of in-law quarters, which is fine, but within the existing structure. So, in terms of approving something this, as an addition, is something that I didn't see in any of, at least this panel's notes, and in previous meetings. Even in the last meeting, the chairman had stated that normally, people will come before the board, and ask for in-law quarters, and those are approved, but it's within the existing structure. So, this is something that's outside the structure. So, so that is my concern, is that, you know, this is outside of, essentially, it is a, it's, it's outside of the, you know, the typical business at hand of the meeting in terms of approving these type of in-law apartments, so. But, those are a couple of issues. I don't agree with this. Like I said before, I have no issues with the in-law apartments. It just needs to be within the structure. I don't agree with it being outside of the structure, so definitely want to state that. But really, the concern that I have now, which it brings up, you know, as you were discussing about the floodplain plan, I was down here last week, did not see that plan. I actually just went out online two minutes ago, and it's not even out there. So, it's hard to make an evaluation for me, when all the documentation, again, is not out there. That is something that I brought up in the last meeting. My expectation is that all documentation's going to be there, and not downloaded the day of the meeting. I don't believe that's appropriate. And, also, if I was to go out there now, I figured, okay, let me go out and take a look, because I don't have all the documentation, and that's specifically what I requested in the last meeting. So, everyone's looking at things, I don't have it. I can't evaluate it appropriately, because I don't have it. I asked in the last meeting, it's been thirty days since the last meeting, I would expect everything to be out there. I was down here last week for the discussion, but it was never mentioned, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I make a statement?
If you'd like, certainly.
Excuse me, can I break this up? So, the, the map that we have in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals is, is from Maps Online. In the town of Ashland, about three, prior to my arrival, I believe the town of Ashland has invested in Maps Online, which is an online G I S network, that is updated and owned by the town, and it provides property information for all parcels across the town. Within that, it is easily accessed by the town website, and or Googling ashlandgis.com. But most residents would get there, or would navigate to Ashland's Maps Online via the Ashland Town website. Within the Ashland Maps Online, there are layers that are added, which concerning zoning, open space, land use, and in this case, the FEMA floodzone maps are added. And so, this information is available to all residents and or citizens in the Metro West area, which would be interested in looking in properties across Ashland. If, and so therefore, this information concerning the FEMA floodplain map is, is available online to anybody at any time.
I, thank you for your comment and your explanation and way to find the information. However, I agree, it's online. I'm sure it's online, everything's online. That's not the issue at hand. The issue is that everyone here has it, I would have never known to go out and look for it. Matter of fact, when I came down here tonight, I was expecting that there would be something out there online. If a full application is there, everything should be complete, I requested in the last meeting. So, to say it's online, well, yes, of course, pretty much everything is online, that's not really the issue. The fact is that it's not bundled with the packet, and it should be bundled with that packet.
Ms. Mims, there's no requirement that everything be bundled in a package online. The town puts as much online as it can, as a courtesy. The records are available at Town Hall for citizens to come and look at, and I understand it's an inconvenience, to say the least, for, for all of us to have to come to Town Hall
I did come to Town Hall.
To look at something.
I did, I actually did that.
However.
I did that, and my expectation.
I mean, unless, unless my fellow board members feel otherwise, I think it's perfectly appropriate for the, the floodplain map to be part of the record in this proceeding, and I think it's been available for people to look at. You're welcome to look at it now, if you would like. We'll take a few minutes of recess to give you an opportunity to look at it. I will represent that it shows that the property is far removed from any floodplain area, and, you know, I'd like to move on with your further arguments, if you have them, so we can, we can move forward.
So, for the record, yes, I understand that, again, you know, I do want to go back to that, because to submit something at the time of the hearing, i- it's not really appropriate. But, if you're saying it's acceptable, it's, evidence or anything should be submitted prior to, it's not submitted at the time of the hearing. So, I do want to state that for the record.
So noted.
Okay. You know, so as I was saying, to approve a project of this nature, according to the state, there's a substantial burden that needs to be approved. However, you know, it's just, I struggle with this project, because what's been before the committee is in, in-law apartments within the existing structure. My concern is movement of the water, or movement of the land will create some issues associated with the water. So, in the water, just in general, in the ground, in that particular area. So, I, you know, I absolutely don't agree with an existing structure. I'm concerned now, in terms of the, the size of the project, it was supposed to be under eight hundred square feet, and Mr. Band, you had mentioned that it's over eight hundred square feet, and everyone stumbled around to say, well, it's seven hundred and ninety-four, seven hundred and ninety-six. I don't know, I haven't seen that. So, I'll go back out there and I'll take a look at it, but, you know, I don't agree with this at this point. You know, these are discussions that we had at the last meeting, and so the expectation would have been, this would have been, would have provided some clarity here, and not at the last minute of going back and forth between two board members on the size of this particular property. Livable space, okay, we can dispute what livable space is. And you comment about a mouse, we can dispute a size of a home and livable space. So, it usually goes from wall to wall, but I don't know, I'd have to look up the, the laws associated exactly what livable space is. But between two board members disagreeing about what the size of the property is, I have concerns, I have a lot of concerns. And so, I'll, I'll go back and I'll take a look at it, and I'll see what else is out there online, because I was down here last week, expecting that I was going to get a full complement of what was going to be presented tonight. That's why I came last week, I came down here. But obviously, that's not the case, because documents are submitted at the last moment, which is not appropriate. I, I can tell you that you could, you could never do that in general circumstances, submit evidence at the last moment. You, you can't. You got to submit it ahead of time, and give the other party an opportunity to look at it, and not an opportunity to look at it while the meeting is going on. That's not the approach. So, so in conclusion, based on my reasoning here, I, I don't agree with this project. One, based on past history of this, of the planning board, and, or the, the Z B A, what you guys, or what has done before, recently, I have not seen that you've approved a project of this nature, it's approved within the existing structure, so based on past history, you know, I, I don't agree with adding the structure, but it would be fine to put it in the existing. I don't disagree with the project, as I stated before, it's fine, I, I don't disagree with it at all, I'm fine with moving forward, but adding it on is the issue. And the concern now is a discrepancy between the size, between two board members, I didn't even bring it up, it's two members, or maybe, I don't know if you're a board member, Peter, but between the town planner and a board member.
So, no, I am not a voting member, just for the record.
That's fine, but let me finish, please, let me finish. The issue is, it was brought up in this meeting, that it's two different sizes, I have a concern about that. So, this creates a discrepancy. So, I need to go back and take a look at the plans. So, you know, so that, that's essentially my reasons for not wanting this approved, and not agreeing with this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, before you start, any questions for Ms. Mims?
I have none.
No, thank you. Well, having, having heard the public having, having heard the public comment, anyone wish to bring Mr. Grimes back? If not, we can, uh, open a discussion amongst the board members, I think, prior to close of the hearing. That's what we typically do, uh, if that's all right. Okay. Then we will, um, close public discussion. Um, I don't think I need a vote to do that, do I?
Typically, yes, you would have a motion to close public discussion.
Is there a motion then to, uh, close?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, aye. Not to oppose, but aye for the three. I hadn't voted. Uh, okay, um, public discussion, uh, rather, discussion amongst the board members. Obviously, at this point, we are going to have three voting members at the time we enter into deliberation. Stuart Siegel, myself, and our associate, uh, member Nathan Bond, who was present at the hearing on November twelfth, and in Mr. Forrestall's absence, will, um, step in and be the third voting member when we do get to deliberations. Just to sort of reiterate a few things, uh, we're here for a special permit under section seven point six, and also the general special permit, section nine point three. And for the accessory family dwelling unit special permit under seven point six, we have the authority to grant it for an ex- conversion of or by attachment via common wall or containment an existing single-family dwelling. The use limitation has to be limited to additional, of an additional family living unit limited to a maximum of four persons. The application, uh, indicates that two people would be residing in it. Seven point six point four provides adequate provision shall be made for the disposal of sewage, waste, and drainage generated by the occupancy of the accessory unit. And if I recall correctly, at the prior hearing, the applicant indicated the property was served by town water and sewer. Seven point six point five, ingress, egress, and access. Adequate provision, as determined by the building inspector, shall be provided for ingress, ingress and egress to the outside of each unit separately. And there also shall be an interior doorway provided between the living units as a means of access for purposes of supervision. The plans that we were prevented with last time complied with that. And in any event, it would be, uh, the requirement of our building inspector to make determination whether those provisions are adequate. Area limitation, we have, um, talked about, uh, and measured, and accordance to the, uh, twenty-two by thirty-six, it's just under eight hundred, uh, square feet. And parking, provisions for off-seat parking for dwellers of both units. I believe the applicant testified, uh, represented at the last hearing. There's a lengthy driveway, as can be seen by the plans, and they have room for six cars in their driveway. And at the moment, uh, they have two, so there would seem to be adequate space for there. And then, if we were to determine, um, to grant a special permit, uh, we can do so only if we determine that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site, and that in addition to any specific factors that may be set forth in the bylaw, the determination shall include consideration of each of the following. And then it lists six separate conditions which we can, which we can go through. Your thoughts, gentlemen, on whether the, um, adverse effects of the proposed use, uh, will or will not outweigh its bene- beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal, and proposal in relation to that site. Stu?
I think the plans that are, um, submitted for the addition for a separate structure attached to this existing structure is within the, um, the bylaws and within our authority to approve.
Nathan?
I agree. Um, I think it sounds like the major concern about negative impacts was groundwater issues. And I think the floodplain map addresses that concern for me.
And I would note that in the, um, the site plan, uh, there is a rather lengthy driveway from the street to the, uh, to the existing home, and that the proposed, uh, accessory unit is to be added to the back of that, which would, um, uh, you would think, uh, prevent it from being visible, uh, for the most part, from the, uh, from the street and the surrounding area. It is a very sizable lot. Excuse me, ma'am, public comment has been closed. Thank you. The six criteria in specific that we have to consider in determining whether or not to grant the special permit and whether it would be advantageous or deleterious to the neighborhood community needs served by the proposal is number one. In this instance, and something that we oftentimes find in these situations, it keeps, allows a, um, an extended family to, uh, live, um, in close proximity to each other, and is something that, uh, I think fits within the, uh, the public goals of the, the town of Ashland. If anyone agrees or disagrees, please speak up. Two would be traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Once again, it's a fairly lengthy, um, driveway. I believe it was represented that there would be one or at most two additional cars from, uh, parents of, uh, Mrs. Grimes, who are, I won't say senior citizens, but are mature, like, like several of us here on the board, and perhaps would not be, uh, drag racing up and down the streets. Number three, adequacy of utilities and other public services. Again, it's property served by town water and sewer. Four, neighborhood character and social structures. The addition is going to be, according to the, the building plans, would be similar in style to the existing property. Uh, it's in a residential RA zone. Uh, there's no commercial space being, uh, being added to the property, and the height of the property, um, would seem to be consistent with the existing, existing home and the structure. Any thoughts of other issues on that?
The height of the building is, is lower than the existing structure.
Okay. Uh, number five, impacts on the natural environment. I mean, we've had some, uh, discussion about that, um, in the presentation and in the public comment session. Again, it's a rather lengthy, large property. The floodplain map would seem to indicate that the floodplain issues are far removed from, uh, where the property line is, but also where the, uh, accessory dwelling unit is proposed to be built. I, I would note that, uh, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I am wrong, but that if a special permit were to be granted, the applicant still has to obtain a building permit from the building inspector. And if there is a consideration, a concern about, uh, issues concerning wetlands or anything of that nature, that the conservation, uh, I guess, agent-
Agent.
-also gets involved at that point, and clearly would have the authority to, um, require the applicant to do what the conservation commission feels would be necessary given the, uh, given the location. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and the building inspector himself, uh, or building commissioner would have to impose any kind of special conditions if there was an issue of water.
Correct. So the building commissioner, this, in any typical accessory dwelling byl- bylaw, you know, accessory dwelling, it, it is comes, it is, it does require a building permit, plumbing permits, electrical permits, as is any typical development within the town of Ashland. If the development occurs within a hundred feet of a wetland, then the conservation, uh, commission jurisdiction is triggered, and therefore would have to go through a conservation review. And that's very typical to any structure that's being built. Mass general law under, within the conservation commission's purview, states that if any development structure, really, structure, anything from a pool to a shed to a dwelling unit is developed or, or built within a hundred feet, that's, that's the item which would trigger conservation approval.
Okay.
The other point that I would like to make, Mr. Chairman, is that the, uh, provision of, uh, an accessory dwelling does not have to be within the existing structure. There can be an additional structure added on for the accessory dwelling. So in other words, I think there was a, a statement made that we, um, one of the, uh, Ms., Ms. Grimes thought that it had to be within the existing structure. It does not. So I just wanted to emphasize that and clarify that.
It is, and I, I, I don't recall saying at the last meeting that, um, it had. I think the, what I meant to say, and perhaps didn't say it clearly, was that I think the last application for an accessory family dwelling that we had, uh, entertained was for a, uh, was for one that was, uh, going to be built in the, I think it was in the basement of the existing structure. But, uh, section, uh, seven point six point two spe- clearly specifies that a special permit may be granted for the conversion of, by attachment via common wall or containment within an existing single-family dwelling only, or new construction of the same, only to accommodate an additional family living unit. So it does, uh, does apply to both. You're, you're correct. And, uh, perhaps I didn't make that clear at the last meeting, but that clearly is what the law provides. There's one final, just going back to the criteria under nine point three point two, there's one additional one that is required, and that's the potential, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. With a new structure, as with any, uh, building, there would be an increased assessment, uh, for real estate tax per s- business, I'm assuming. And there would be an additional, uh, real estate tax generated for the town. Impact on town services via, uh, water and sewage usage. Two additional residents would not appear to, uh, present any, uh, particular concern about that. And employment, uh, I think we could all assume that there would be some, uh, minimal employment for some short period of time for a construction company to build the assess, the, uh, addition, but there would not be any, uh, long-term employment benefits for the, uh, for the town. And those would be the criteria, uh, that we have to address. Having said all that, do, we feel that we're ready to, uh, enter into deliberations? Or do you wish to have some further discussion on this before we enter into, into the deliberation aspect?
I don't need any additional time.
Uh, then I think probably a motion to, um, close our discussion and enter into deliberations would be appropriate.
So moved. I second it.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, entering into deliberations, and again, for the record, sitting on this matter will be, uh, Stuart Siegel, member, John Trefethan, member, and Nathan Byrne-
Band.
Ben. Nathan Band, in my apologies, associate member. Okay. I think we covered most of the points in the, um, in the discussion aspect of it. And, um, you know, I'll be, be glad to go first, um, unless someone else wishes to. But, um, it is my feeling that it would be appropriate, based on the, uh, information that we have been given and the, uh, documentation provided, that we, uh, vote to grant the, uh, special permit for the accessory family dwelling unit. And we can then go upon, again, with the, uh, the specific findings that we need to make thereafter. But let's find out if we're all on that page, or if we have different thoughts before we go down that page. Stuart?
Mr. Chairman, I'm also in agreement that the plans submitted, um, meet the specifications for the project. And, um, I would vote to approve the project.
Nathan?
Also in agreement.
Okay. And again, my apologies for your last name. That's terrible. Okay. I mean, that being said, um, with our, with our decision, we have to make, um, several, several findings. And I think we've discussed those on, in our discussion phrase, but just to be, be clear, why don't I sort of state them and, uh, let each of you add or subtract or whatnot from, from what I say, uh, just to make sure that, uh, you know, we're all in agreement. Obviously, one of the primary, uh, conditions, because we do have a right to place conditions on it, is that, um, the applicant would have to comply with any and all, uh, Ashland bylaws in, um, this, which would include the use limitation, disposal of sewage, ingress, egress under seven point six point five. And we also have to make a finding, a specific finding, that the new construction and occupancy of the unit will meet the requirements of this section. I believe we could make that finding. We need to, uh, make sure that they comply with each and every specific item under seven, section seven point six of the accessory family dwelling unit, and that shall be, uh, entered into our decision. We also need to make findings under section nine point three point two that the, um, adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. And I believe we can make that determination.
Yes, sir.
And with respect to the six, uh, particular areas of consideration, we need to make findings of community, community needs served by the proposal. I believe I had indicated allowing, uh, an extended family to, uh, live in close proximity to each other would be appropriate. If there are other community needs met, we can certainly add them if either of you feel something else that would, uh, fall within that regard. And number two would be traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Uh, we have a lengthy driveway. The parking is apparently going to be adequate with up to six space for up to six cars, and only two at the present, and two occupants moving into the accessory dwelling unit, so presumably a maximum of four, but we could certainly limit, make as a condition that the cars parked be no more than six, if that's what the applicant indicated, the, the parking space totals. Would that be a condition you want to limit, or do you want to just leave it alone?
Could use that as a.
A six? Yeah, okay. Because I don't know whether people are going to start collecting cars, and we don't want them to bad up. Neighborhood character and social structures, it's a residential neighborhood, it's a large lot. The accessory dwelling unit is being built at the rear of the existing structure, and would be generally not visible to the street level. Anything else you wish to add to, to that?
No.
Impacts on the natural environment. Again, if there are issues involved with with the being close to a, a wetland, it is something that the Conservation Agent would have to in, be involved in, but from the floodplain map that we have, it is not in a floodplain zone or a, or a wetland area. And the property or the structure is being built well beyond the setback requirements required for properties in the R.A. District. And then under number six, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. There would seem to be little impact on town water and sewer. An additional structure being built would presumably raise the tax assessment and generate further tax income. And far as employment is concerned, be minimal impact with construction, employment to construct the development, nothing long-term. Anything else on any of those points?
Uh, no.
Now, as far as conditions are concerned, we have a, a set of conditions that we normally apply. Ones I indicated would be that they have to comply with any and all Ashland bylaws, and that would include construction times, et cetera. Emma, there's a, there's a set of conditions that we typically apply to our special permit hearing decision. So if you would just plug those in to the hearing decision?
Yes, and I actually did prepare a possible draft, since this is my first decision with the ZBA, so if you don't mind. I mean, I can also look at other special permits, but I took up the list one.
Well, I suppose first of all, we probably need to, we probably need to make a vote to, to finalize this. And then, I mean, I have no objection to looking at a, a draft decision. I was on a way we were going to get one, because normally, or what we, what we've done so is not to run into some, some time issues, which we found ourselves in once upon a time. By voting, we don't normally vote until we have a, a draft decision given to us to look at, so that we can then vote to approve it, and we don't run into a time issue. If we vote to approve something, and then we don't come back to a meeting like thirty days away, because I for one am not coming back on Christmas Eve to have a meeting, and I don't think I'd be joined by anyone else. We, we could run into an issue concerning the time in which we have to finalize and sign a decision. What do people wish, wish to do? If we vote to if we vote to approve it tonight, and we don't, we don't approve, or we have changes to make to the decision that Emma has drafted, because none of us have seen it, we would not be back for a meeting until, I believe it's January four.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth? No, that doesn't seem right. If it's the second Tuesday, it would be the, the ninth? Fourteenth, yes, okay. So we'd have over thirty days after which to sign it after we voted to approve it. I suppose, would it be appropriate before we take a formal vote to review the draft decision, to see if we're in a position to vote to approve it tonight and move the process along a little bit? I'm just, let me, can we have a motion to go into a brief recess for a moment? I'd want to, I'd like to check something.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We don't have to sign the decision apparently until ninety days after we close the hearing. And the hearing wouldn't be closed until after we vote on a decision. So that if we didn't review the decision until January fourteenth, we wouldn't run into a, a time constraint on having to sign a decision and file it before we would have a meeting. On the other hand, obviously, nothing would be done, or could be done by the applicant until the decision is, is closed. We, Peter, we closed the hearing only after we voted on it, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
The voting is, yeah, vote, yes.
The vote has to be within the contents of the hearing.
Correct, and we vote, and, and at this point right now, you've closed public comment through a motion.
Right.
And you're in deliberation.
Yep.
Where you can motion to.
End deliberations and vote?
End deliberations, close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then you're, and then you can move into a vote.
Oh, okay.
On the motion.
Very good. If there are no more, there's nothing more for us, deliberated on, perhaps a, a motion to close the public hearing then? Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now. We need to go into.
Well, you're in deliberations, and so now you could, you can vote, correct.
And we vote by, by name. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of granting the application for special permit for accessory family dwelling unit for the reasons stated in our deliberations.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor of granting the motion for the special permit for the accessory dwelling based on our discussion.
Aye, Nathan Band, vote in favor of the accessory dwelling, based on the discussions.
Okay, so we have a three to nothing vote. So that ends the formalities of that, but let's, let's take a look at the draft decision, if we may, and see what, what we have before us.
Yeah, a copy will be provided to town clerk. We will not vote, we'll not send a copy, but we will send notice that a copy of the decision was on fire, is on fire with the town clerk.
You know, can't we, can't we, this is just send Ms. Mims and we may have a copy of the decision, we don't, we don't need to go to the formality of that. Thank you.
Can we comment on this?
Oh, I, I believe so, yes, absolutely.
So under facts and evidence, you'd have to change paragraph three.
Right.
Right.
Same with the comments under voting members on the last page.
Yep. Um, if we're, if we're going in, in order while we're back on page two, under facts and evidence, um, at the continued public hearing on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, the applicant, Michael Grimes, and dot, 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 I don't quite know what.
I wasn't going to assume what was going to be presented, so that was always going to have to be changed. That was always going to have to be amended, um, so I will include a short statement saying that he, you know, appeared and was ready to answer questions, and that.
It was also public comment.
Then there was public comment, and those can be found in the minutes, yeah.
Also in section C, I would like that to agree more with John's discussion of those points that he, that he made.
Yes, absolutely, um, I.
Which you can get from the recording.
Yep, especially the, um, the cars.
We would have to add, we were talking, saying the cars is a special condition. Right, under the conclusion.
Excellent point, that's a condition, not a finding, great point.
Plus the other.
I, I was gonna say, I think we, we usually list the conditions separately and not under a
Not under conclusion?
Not under a category of conclusion.
Yeah, they usually go open, conditions.
Just conditions would be fine.
Yeah.
Before conclusion?
So con- conclusion will, yeah, no conclusions, right, and then under conditions, you can, you, under conclusion, you'll just put a subtitle, conditions. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and we've got to comply with the other Ashland bylaws and the state building code, and filing it in the registry of deeds.
Condition, yeah.
You know, I think we need to come back and review a decision before we can sign it. I mean, I'm not comfortable, I think we, there are going to be enough changes made that, um, I know if it was just a couple of little lines, I'd have no problem agreeing to it and signing it, signing the signature page, and having the changes made, and then file with the town clerk. But I think there's too much that needs to be added. What do you folks think? Stuart?
I tend to agree.
Okay. Will you be here on January four, will you folks be available on January fourteenth?
I would.
I believe so.
Okay, in general, you mean not going to sunny Florida or anything like that?
Depends on how much snow we get.
Okay. Okay. Do you think, you're clear on what we're, what we're looking for? Okay.
And if you look at the other, the past accessory dwelling write-up. If you see how that was formatted, it might help you.
There was one we did, I'm, I'm thinking like three years ago, that was an ex, an outside additional unit, and that might have some language that would be, that would be helpful in what we did in that case to go with this. Okay, I think that would be, but it was a nice, nice job anticipating what some of our findings might be with respect to the, the conditions based upon the evidence we had heard the last time. Okay, anything else further that we need to do with respect to this tonight? I don't, I don't think so. We voted to approve it for purposes, for your purposes. We have to finalize and sign the decision, and unfortunately, because of the calendar and our meeting dates, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, January fourteenth. At that point, we will sign the decision. It will be filed in the town clerk's office the next day. There is a twenty-day period in which the decision can be appealed, and after that, I believe it can be filed at the registry of deeds, and you can break ground. Is that a fair assessment of what?
Pretty much, I, I talked to Mr. Grimes beforehand, I, I laid out the process and the steps to move forward, but I think that sounds appropriate. And I think we can all break for Christmas break.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks, we appreciate it. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes of our Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes of our November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting. Emma was kind enough to send out a draft last week to all of us to review. Did you receive any changes from any of us?
No.
I didn't have any comments or evidence?
No, I, I did not, I thought it was a very good job, thank you for that.
Should we make a motion to approve?
I think somebody should do that, yes.
I move that we approve the, the minutes of November twelve. As, as submitted.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Very good. Final item of the agenda, if there is any, our staff updates and administrative matters.
Yeah, you'll just find in your packets a schedule for twenty twenty meetings. The first page has a lot of detail, and the second page has a more streamlined version with both the first possi, the first meeting and then the possible second meeting as well. Yep, it's.
This page here?
Yep. So I haven't quite made the, you know, cut-to-the-point version where I take out all the extra dates, but that should get you the information you need. Yep, it's that one. Um, so just for your information that will be posted online.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's very helpful to explain our calendar. Any other administrative matters?
No.
I think I had mentioned at the last meeting that I had received a talent bank form several months ago from an individual Ashland resident who had expressed interest in becoming an associate member. Unfortunately, we did not have a meeting for a couple of months, and he was unable to attend the last meeting because of a business commitment. I did notify him, send him an email of tonight's meeting. If he had any, if he had interest, he'd be welcome to attend. I did not hear or have a response, so I don't know whether he is still interested or whether he had taken his talents to one of the other town boards that he had expressed an interest in. So we are it, and I don't think there is anything else on the agenda other than to wish everybody happy holidays, happy new year. We'll do that during the formal meeting. And then perhaps a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
Oh, right, we've, we've got it, we've got it in double duty here. Thank you very much. Waka, thank you.